Madam Mayor, recording has begun.
Actually, 6:01, I would like to officially call this meeting to order. Would you, I guess, we're gonna do roll call first from the booth?
Madam Mayor. Councilman Goldsmith. Councilwoman Trolinger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
She will not be joining us this evening.
Councilman Jenkins.
Here.
And Mayor James.
I am here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you all have had the opportunity to look at the agenda, I do not believe we have any changes. If I could get a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And also, if you have had the opportunity to look at the minutes for the 28th of February, the open session, as well as the closed session, if they are in order, I would entertain a motion. For me, sir?
Madam Mayor, I would move to approve the motions as presented, and I forget the dates.
For both? Fantastic.
For both, yes, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Any discussion?
Could, I just add a comment that I appreciate that the minutes have a little more information with respect to questions asked from the town council members. I find that, from a personal perspective, it may be a public, such a little bit more information about what we talk about, so, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of approving the open session and closed session meetings? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to our public comment. I see that we do have one that has signed up, which, you know, I always look forward to anyways. So if you would like to speak, I ask that you state your name, whether you are within the incorporated town limits, and if you could keep it to three minutes or less, I'd greatly appreciate it. So Maggie, come on down. I am sure you did.
I'm kitchen timer, and I think I committed about three minutes and four seconds.
You know what? I might be, I, I'm feeling generous today. We may be able to do that. Go ahead, Maggie.
Maggie Larick, and I do live within the town of La Plata. As I sat at my computer on Sunday night to get the information for tonight's meeting, so they could post the information on a couple of Facebook pages to get the word out. That any?
Okay, put the, uh, let's see now. To put the word out that anything was even happening at the town hall, I thought to myself, why am I doing this? Shouldn't the town of La Plata be posting publicly where and when their meetings are take place? And then I remembered, this is the age of computers, and everyone should know that there's a website for everything, and if they really were interested, the public would ferret out that information for themselves. Well, I'm right. The website allows the town council to do the minimum within the law to notify the public regarding the affairs of the town La Plata government. The required public notice of town council meeting is there. I seem to recall earlier this year, when you, Madam Mayor, were practically dancing on the dais, rejoicing over 650 townspeople had signed a petition. You were so excited at the public's participation. Let me tell you how much effort went into gathering those signatures. Petitions were written and printed. Several people went door to door. Several people sat and stood at tables for the purpose of getting signatures. There was effort put forth to engage the public. I recently asked for and was granted the numbers for the last town election. Of the 7,054 active registered voters in the town of La Plata, the May for 2001 election garnered only 496 voters. By my calculations, that's a paltry 7.03%. Why so few? Is it because the townspeople are uninterested? Is it because the townspeople don't know where or when the business takes place at the town hall? But I do, I don't know the answer, but I do know this. Minimum effort gets minimum results. Yes, I know you have a newsletter that's published quarterly, and from where I sit, what a waste of money on the town's part. Every quarter, a stack of newsletters is delivered to my building. The stack from January is still there. It serves mostly as a place for merely reporting activities that have already occurred, but not much to give the public an inkling of what issues the town council is tackling. Not one to come to the table with a problem, but no possible remedies, even without a degree in communication, I can think of a few ways to improve communications from the town council. A Facebook page for the town of La Plata. The county government has one, and recently had a notice of both an employment opportunity and a notification of a public hearing. There's also Instagram and Twitter. Newspaper coverage of the town council meetings, maybe just once a month column, recapping the town business, or a newspaper posting at the beginning of the month with a calendar of scheduled meetings for the month, to include the website address where minutes are found and full agendas are posted. If you, if you truly are to be a representative council, a little more effort to get information to the public regarding the business of the town of La Plata just might go a long way toward increasing public engagement. Thank you. Thank you, Maggie. And we do have a Facebook page, the town does. It is called the Town of La Plata Facebook Page. So I appreciate your, your suggestions, and we'll see what we can do. Would anybody else like to speak this evening? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, and that would be Cornerstone. Come on down.
We stand here, you want me to be informal, sit down.
Oh, sit. And if you could grab the, yeah, there you go.
All right. This way. If I'm not standing, then I can see everybody. Thank you very much. Pleasure to be back with you again. Just before we get started, things are really busy in Annapolis. You know, we were scheduled to be here at the last meeting. We were unable to do it because I didn't get out of a voting session until 7:30 that night. So, and, so I was reflecting just the last week. In all my years in Annapolis, I've never seen when we get down to the last week before crossover. There are very few bills left to be scheduled. First of all, there weren't as many bills that were, that were put in this year, and so, and the committees didn't do, in my opinion, a very good job of voting bills out. So where they are now, they're in this frantic schedule to try to get all these bills, you know, up before the committee get a vote and only get them to the floor. Next Monday is crossover. That means that every bill from the House has to cross over to the Senate and vice versa in order to be guaranteed a hearing. So everybody's in a frantic rush, frantic rush to in order to get all of those bills done through. It's been a busy time for us, working on some of the projects for the town of La Plata. And I've got a little, little list of things that I wanted to make sure that we go through tonight, just to bring you up on a date. Probably the most important one, oh, first of all, Chris Dews and Bernie, Chris Dews was scheduled to be here. I just got a word from him on my way over that he's still in the voting session, waiting for a few of our bills to come up, but apologizes for not being here. Hopefully, at our next meeting after April, the session will be over, and Chris and Bernie and myself can be here in person, so. The most important issue that we've been dealing with since the town engaged Cornerstone was water appropriation. You know, when you look at the history of, of the attempts for La Plata to get the additional appropriation that you need in order to properly plan, La Plata is certainly not out of water or near being out of water, but every municipality, every government entity has got to look ahead. And when I was the county commissioner, we tried to look ahead 15 to 20 years on a water surinise because, and it's even more important to have more time lag right now because of the permitting process. It takes a lot longer with all the public hearing requirements, and necessarily so, that you have to get through. So it's wise on the town of La Plata to try to figure out where your water is going to go as you have this growth that is occurring. We've been unsuccessful getting to an agreement between the town and the county. There's a need, as we all know, for the state to be involved in that process because the waters in Charles County is in everywhere else in the state, do not belong to the counties. They belong to the state of Maryland, and it's the Department of Environment that appropriates those waters. And I will quite frankly, you know, state my reasons why I think we haven't gotten anywhere. Governor Hogan was very, very successful, did a lot of great things, very, very popular, but he did not like to get in the middle of any controversy. So the word that we got for the last eight years from, from the administration, Department of Environment, county, town, worked this out. And I remember when you first hired us, we went to Baltimore and met with then Secretary Grummels, and he thought everything was already worked out. And, and the town, of course, was thinking that everything had been worked out, just wanted to get it moving because it was just short of a few technical changes that had been made. And so, since then, things went downhill, and we have not been able to reach a compromise. I think now with the new change in administration, we have a new secretary that's there, Serena McGeelewing. I met with her a couple of weeks ago. She is one of the brightest people I've ever met, really into running the department properly. We talked about the situation here in La Plata and the need for the La Plata to have some certainty about where our water is going to come from for the future needs of the county. So subsequent to that, I met with the president of the county commissioners to try to get it onto the agenda. So we're looking after the session is over, and when the new secretary has gotten herself up to speed to try to get this whole entire thing back up on the front burner, and hopefully that will be successful. So if you want, Madam Mayor, I can go through the list. We can open up for questions, so if you want to take one item at a time and see if there are any questions, however you'd please to proceed.
I will open it up for questions. Any questions on the water appropriation and the efforts being made right now?
I don't, go ahead. Just a question, and I guess one observation. First of all, thanks for being here and doing that effort. So, so y'all did meet with the new secretary just briefly?
It was just a brief encounter that I had with her.
Okay. So.
And it was very fortunate that meeting was less than that, you'd remember less. He's a government affairs person there, and also Lee Curry, who is the head of the whole entire water appropriation division, but is an M.D., so.
Okay, good. And then, I, just like a comment, I'm glad that you said what you said with respect that we're not running out of water tomorrow morning, and the fact that the town has been planning, long before I got here on this council, that we've been trying to get the, go through the appropriate process to obtain the necessary permits. And then finally, I'm glad also you said it's not town water, it's not county water, it's regulated by the state. That's the controlling agency, so, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, you know, the whole entire issue of planning, and this is what we try to impress upon the county commissioners. You know, look at where they are. If you look at their capital budget, you know, there's money in there for the new connection WSSC, but there's also money that they're starting a feasibility study for water impoundment. That's probably 25 or 30 years out. They're not pushing that. They need to do that because somewhere along the line out there, as I said before, it takes years to get these things up and going, you know, to get through the permitting process and whatnot. So, you know, they recognize the need to plan ahead. They certainly ought to understand La Plata's need to have some certainty about where water is going to be in 15 or 20 years, or, in our case, sooner than that, so. Okay, the next thing was, the last time we met here, we had a presentation of the police station that La Plata was pursuing in reference to the Southern Maryland Oil Bill, building, Southern Maryland Oil Building. And I think the unanimous decision was that that cost is way more than the town can afford. And so, we met, Cornerstone met with the mayor in Brentabout, and I think we got questioned at that, is there anything that the state can do to assist the town? And we looked at it, there's really truly no program within state government for it. But one of the things that we decided to do, while Governor Hogan was still in office and while the state at that time was still awash with money, to make a budget request of Governor Hogan, his last budget. He was very generous, put the $500,000 into the budget, which according to, you know, our discussions with the town is what would be needed to do the design, the feasibility study, and possibly some of the engineering. So we put a request in for $500,000, and it was in Governor Hogan's budget. But the new governor came in, it was his prerogative to, you know, either go with those or else to change them. He did not approve the, put the $500,000 in the budget. So the approach that we've taken has been a sort of a three-pronged approach to try to get the money back into the budget. We were expecting a number of supplemental budgets to come down from the new governor, and we made a pitch, and we worked with the town to put together a letter of request for the governor more in his budget for the $500,000. And so, realizing that that may not come to fruition, the next step would be to make sure that, because the appropriations committee, the legislature has the ability now, that they can rearrange money within the budget to talk to their appropriation chairs to see if, in fact, that the governor did not include it, would they be willing to look at that. So we've met with the two appropriation chairs, and then the third, third approach was the local bond initiatives that the delegation has. And this year's an unusual year. In all the years that I've been there, there's never been more than $15,000 or $20,000 in local bond initiatives. This year, there's $100 million, $50 million for each chamber. So there's a possibility that we can get the money there. To follow through on that, Chris Dews and myself met with every single member of the Charles County delegation, and two weeks ago, the mayor and myself did a virtual meeting with the delegation to make that pitch. I talked to, I talked to Senator Jackson afterwards to see what he felt, how things went. He thought they went well, and he felt good about the project. So I made a call to him to make sure that's on the front burner, and if there's any change, please let us know if we had to do any work. Last evening, I talked to delegate Edith Patterson, who's chair of the Southern Maryland delegation. We talked about the project, and what she suggested is that on the 24th, that's next, not this Friday, but next Friday, the delegation is going to meet, and that perhaps the town might want to come in and give a little bit further explanation of the project. I said, the only thing that we have is, we have the information that we gathered from the study that we did of the Southern Maryland Oil Bill that looks at how many square feet we need, what type of amenities we need in the facility and whatnot. So, so if the town is so inclined, I could go ahead and try to schedule that for the 24th for a meeting.
Will it be in person or virtual?
All of their meetings are virtual, so to be virtual, just like the last meeting.
I think that would be lovely.
Okay. So, there's, we were where we are. I think the other thing that, I don't know how far, how closely we've been watching the money situation in the state of Maryland. Every March, we get the, we get the projection of what the revenue is going to be in. And the legislature is required to take those estimates and conform the budget accordingly. The estimates came in almost about a $500 million write-down. So what is happening is the legislature is looking at a lot of legislation that has been introduced, that has a fiscal note to it, that to be very, very cautious about moving forward with any of those projects. Also, to look at some of the projects that are in the capital budget for reconsideration. So we've been working real hard to make sure that our clients' projects are included. So we're up there fighting for you, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the work being done on our behalf on the police station?
Yes, a couple of questions. Matt Trolinger, Ward too. Thank you, Mr. Middleton, for being here tonight and explaining kind of how you're looking to pursue the town of La Plata in our residents' best interests in these projects. As it relates to a potential meeting with the Southern Maryland delegation regarding the police station, what it sounds like is, we're pitching what work we've already put together, but that's not necessarily what we would be using the money for, right? So as far as, we're not converting this other building.
Right.
At all. And so my concern is, because I know in the past, we've, we've met with them kind of as a council back during the kind of more COVID days, and I just want to make sure that when we're presenting, it's done so with some structure and some meat to it, so that there's not a barrage of follow-ups that, you know, I don't know, I don't know how to phrase it, but I want us to be able to present it in such a way that they're obviously willing to approve it, but we're looking towards the future of what our actual needs are, right? Because I know with such a large request, there's going to be a lot of questions, and I don't want, you know, either you or the mayor to be, be hit with all sorts of stuff if we can prep you ahead of time with either, I know it's not economically feasible to get a whole new study, right?
I think, I think what they're, what we need to do is, what you wanted in a police station, you know, amenities, yeah, and those are pretty much laid out in the, in the study that was done of the, of the old facilities. So what you see going into a new police station is pretty much what they want.
Is it, would it be helpful, and I'm, I'm kind of, I see the chief is on via, you know, Zoom or Teams, but would it be helpful to have the chief there, or to have some kind of projection as to, obviously with our pay point, everything else that we've looked at as to the needs of the town to expand in our department and everything else for that meeting? This is not a, it's not a want, but it's a need, it's a dire need for us?
Yeah, well, first of all, you're only going to get about 10 minutes.
Sure.
So it's going to have to be very, very concise and, and to the point. And as far as questions are concerned, that meeting, it's not with the Southern Maryland delegation, it'd be with the Charles County delegation.
Got it.
And that's subsequent to the Southern Maryland delegation. So if that meeting goes long, it means that they have even less time. So I think you just want a concise overview of, this is what we were anticipating in the new police station, and perhaps the police chief would be the one to do it, or whoever your consultant was for the, the design, for the design and engineering, that can show how many square footage you need, what security you need, what footprint you need, how many acres you need. And then I would just look at, because one of the questions probably going to be, well, where would it be located? And, and I mentioned to them that there are two sites that we're looking at, one right here in the town of La Plata, and also the Box Elder project, maybe probably the two areas where we're going to be concentrating on. So I think brevity is going to be the most important thing. If you want, if you have a small handout that has a schematic of what the, what, what you had in that building, what you anticipate having that, I think that would be helpful.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Brent, did you have something?
No, I was saying, I can create that presentation depending on what time it is, and I'm a master of brevity, so.
Yes, you are. You know, Senator Middleton, we saw, I just got a notification last night that, a quick update on bond requests. There have been a total of 780 bond requests by members of the General Assembly. Below are the ones submitted by our delegation, meaning Southern Maryland delegation, and it was Bell Alton High School Heritage Museum, the Lions Club Camp Merrick, Indian Head Grocery, Historic Waldorf School, Anne Marie Sculpture Garden, Willing Helpers Society, Boys and Girls Club of Southern Maryland, and Southern Crossing Kitchen for Homeless to the tune of $900,000. We did not even make a list.
No, we didn't make the list the last year either.
That's true, but we did get money for the, and, well, that was your efforts in getting us money for the Dorchester Community Center. So it looks like, and, and they are quite hefty, ranging from $116,000 to $900,000 that they put in for, whether they get that or not.
See, what happens is that, it used to be, when I was chairman of the capital budget, you know, we used to have this back and forth and whatnot. Now it's very simple. The chairs of the capital budget go to each member and say, give me your list of priorities. What's your number one project? We have X amount of dollars that we're going to allocate to you. What are your priorities? So, and I was a little surprised, quite frankly, with delegation. They had the, their, their bond bill hearing before the general election ties here, which is, you know, I know, you could assume in Charles County, all the Democrats were going to get elected, but it really truly, it sort of caught us off guard. I thought for sure that the, that the bond bill hearing would be after. So we, we didn't, we weren't, we didn't even know it, and consequently, we didn't get that bond bill request in. But, so what you're going to have is you're going to have, and I talked to delegate Patterson, most of those projects that you mentioned are priorities for the, for the House side, House delegation. The Senate's going to have $50 million too. So it's key that Senator Ellis and Senator Jackson are supportive of this project, which they seem to be from the meetings that we've had with them. So hopefully, we can get the $500,000 in.
That would be great.
We make the cases that, you know, the town of La Plata's only got so much money for this. You looked at the Smoe Building, you spent a lot of money into it, and now you've got to go back and do the same thing over again. And you, you know, and, and the price tag came way over what the town of La Plata was budgeting for. This is, and we need it. If you've been to the little, a police station in La Plata, there's no doubt, shouldn't be any doubt on anybody's mind, you need a new facility.
Absolutely.
And when you look at the growth that's anticipated for the, for the town, you want to plan for the future, you want to build for the future, for a building that's going to take you through at least 20 to 25 years out into the future, so.
Right, thank you. Any more comments on the police station? All right, moving on.
Okay, the next one we have is Box Elder. One of the things that, if you remember, that we had on our side is that we knew the people within the Department of Health. Van Mitchell was the secretary of health there, so he knew the players. And so, to get the property surplus, and this is different than the way most declarations of surplus of state property go. Typically, the state has no more use for it, so then they contact the other state agencies to see if any of them are interested, and if not, then it goes down to local government. This was different. This was a request from the town. The buildings were there, they were deteriorating, and the town had an interest in too. So the town initiated this whole declaration surplus. The fellow that we worked there was Ateef, do you remember Ateef John Reed? But he's now the secretary for the Department of General Services, who will make the ultimate decision about the disposal of this property. So, so we will start working with him. Hopefully, we can get some cooperation from the county because we were right down to the last thing to sign it off to the town of La Plata, what they've requested of us was a letter of support or an okay from the county commissioners, and you remember how that whole entire thing blew up. So we've got to go back to the drawing board to get their concurrence. I think if they realize that we're looking at this area as a public safety issue, that, and that's a possible site. We've had this discussion before. When you look at the police presence on 301, it's significant. When you look at the new corridor, where a lot, most of the development is going right now, it's right along that Rosewick Road extended. You know, to have a property nearby for quicker response, that you don't have to cross over 301, would be, or here in La Plata, are two good likely spots for, to have a police station, so.
Thank you. Any questions for, on this? All right.
So when we need some kind of letter from the commissioners? Pardon? I'm sorry.
Well, the meeting that I had with, with the, with President Collins, we went through this whole entire list of things that we would like to see get going. I think there's a perception out there that things, given the situation in the county, things are just still there right now, and there are things that they could do to start moving forward. And we have this whole list of projects that have been on, we've thought they were on the front burner for a long time, that we got to get them moving. And that leads a perfect segue into my next discussion.
Okay.
And that's the sidewalks on Washington Avenue. And that's one of the projects that I, I suggested to Senator, President Collins, to get it on. That project has been on the books for over 30 years. It was there before I became a county commissioner, David. And I got in there in 86. That was a commitment that was made by the prior Board of Commissioners, Marlon Dean, Loretta Nimerick, and Commissioner Carrico, so. And, so anyway, we had our meeting, I guess it was eight to 10 months ago, and it was a really good meeting with the county staff. They all agreed, let's go, let's look at what we have. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. Let's look at the gaps here that we need to have some feasibility study, engineering done on. And I guess it was Kathy, we asked her, well, how long will that take? And she said about two weeks. Well, now we're about 10 months later, and we finally got some correspondence from the town. And I don't know if you've shared that with the, with the members, but the question is that the cost of doing the study, they have $60,000 in the budget, and is that going to be enough? Do we have to narrow the scope or whatnot? I've had some brief conversations. I don't think we want to narrow the scope because in order to get the state and federal monies, if you're going to have an accommodation for bikes, then you, you don't want to narrow the scope. You want to keep it there, especially since there are some federal monies that wouldn't be available there, so. So our response back was, where's $100,000 that was committed? Without interest, of course, back in the, back in the late 70s, early 80s. Without interest, of course, back in the, back in the late 70s, early 80s. And so, uh, so that's going to be the whole entire question, starting point. Is that $100,000 still good? If it isn't? And also, Brett, you're working with the, uh, with the consultants to get an idea of exactly how much, well, a ballpark figure of how much it would cost to do the study.
And there are so many studies out there, and I have, uh, done some research myself. And it was first discussed in 1960 to put sidewalks in there. And so it has been a day or two, and it, and it's a safety issue. Yes, we watch people walking, uh, pushing a stroller and, and holding a toddler's hand on someone's grass, um, to get, you know, from one place to another. And so this is very, I mean, this is one of the top initiatives for me is to get the sidewalks done for safety.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. And you're going to get the new library there, that more people are going to be using it.
Exactly.
County government is growing.
Yes.
I would certainly concur with what Mayor James just said, because I'm a walker and I'm a cyclist, former runner. So it's personal for me, but you're right, the library is going to be there. And I get a lot of feedback from folks, where are the sidewalks on Washington Avenue? From longtime residents too.
Yep.
And, 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 and to be, and, and it's, and it's in our comp plan. It's in our 2020 comp plan that says, let's make La Plata more walkable. So, and, and so this is a great, again, another, from my perspective, another great opportunity for a partnership and cooperative effort with the county to get stuff like this done.
Yep.
Thank you.
You know, I take real pride in La Plata. I think La Plata is one of the neatest towns, you know? Every time I mention to people, I talk about the George Will article. And what, what is nice about La Plata, and when you did the, the vision process of make it a downtown area, a walking town, those sidewalks add to that, that whole entire ambiance of the, of the county, in addition to the safety reasons, which of course are paramount here. So. So hopefully we can get the project moving. It's not because we haven't been digging it.
Oh, thank you for keeping the gas on, you know, you're putting the gas.
But sometimes things just take forever to get done.
Any questions on this one?
Actually, I, I've read, I think, three previous studies started back, I guess, in the 50s, 60s and 70s when, and as your agreement was with the town, county commissioners at that point in time. But I think all those studies have been overtaken by events, and the cost factors have been overridable. So, yeah, we need the new study as such.
Yep.
And I think I saw the same family that you saw, where the mother's pushing the car, holding a toddler behind her, on going down Washington Avenue on facing traffic.
Yep.
So.
And then you have the farmer's market there, which is a very big thing.
Yes, the farmer's market has really blossomed, and so people take advantage of that, but the, there's no walkability to get there. So, you know, they're taking their families, um, on, on a journey that we hope is safe, but, uh, uh, it's not. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And what else do you have?
And the next project is Route Six Streetscape Project. I don't know if you saw the, the workup, the minutes of the meeting that they had with all these stakeholders. I, I'm with you. It's what, the things that have to be looked at. And I couldn't help but thinking, you know, part of it was all these open entrances onto Route Six. And the fact that Route Six is, is probably one of its kind, where you have a major thoroughfare going right through, it's the main street of the town. And all the issues that associated with just coming in tonight, like usual. Once you get right to the turnoff there to the library and up, you have got to be 100% attentive. I mean, cars just darting out everywhere, the median strip, people zipping in there, and it's just, uh, so all the factors that you have to take in consideration, the, the Board of Education and the safety of it, the beautification of it. So it looks like they're doing it right. As I understand it, they're going to have a strategy meeting. They're trying to get the word out about the May meeting that they're going to have, where they can have citizen input, try to get as many of the people out there. The, the stakeholders are coming together in April to develop that whole entire strategy for that public meeting coming up. So. And I, this reminds me a lot about the visioning plan, the way we did the visioning plan years ago, prior to the tornado coming through, where, you know, the house people came together. I, I attended a few, almost every Saturday morning. They met and they had the planner from the Department of Planning looking at what they wanted La Plata to look like. And, uh, my God, the forward thinking there, and then the tornado came through. All of that study, all that work had been done, and look what happened. You know, so much, I don't know, uh, Matt or Jim, if you've heard from the folks over at Indian Head, you know, they looked at what happened, La Plata says, it's a shame that the tornado didn't land down in, in Indian Head soon, because they could have gotten some of the same things. So. But it's good to see that, uh, that project is underway. That's a pretty significant project. Uh, we owe a lot of things to former Secretary Ports. We have a really good relationship with them, and I, we, on behalf of the, of the town, just really press, it's very important that we get this project in this budget now, so that the next administration comes along. We may far enough along where that money will be secured. And that's about, what, 11.7 million dollars, I think, for the project? So.
Yes, thank you.
It's there. Well, it's good that it was a priority for the town of La Plata.
Yes, that is really, and that's, uh, as you said, a, a major thoroughfare that really needs improvement.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, the next project just, uh, is Dorchester Community Center. We got the $500,000 last year. In addition to that, the town had gotten, I believe, from Governor Hogan, $250,000 there. Where we are right now is just trying to, you know, set up a meeting with the folks over there to look at, uh, what sorts of activities we want and, uh, the whole overall management of the facilities. Anybody, I'm sure every one of you all know that, you know, the capital costs are the cheapest thing associated with building. It's the cost of the operations, and that's a very, very important consideration. So.
That has been the, um, I think that has been what has been stalling the project is that operational, they don't have a plan. And we have, um, seen plans for the building. And, um, we, we've got the land and we've got funding. Now we just need for the operational side to have everything in order, and, and then the project will come together. And I tell you, when I sat here five years ago, and the chief, uh, the chief and I had been talking about this, and, and I gave them a deadline. Chief, didn't I give them a deadline of a year? I told them, in one year, I want the, the groundbreaking. And wow, it is so much more work.
Yep.
Um, than, uh, you really anticipate with that. But if you don't have the operations in order, then you've got nothing but a shell that will soon be an empty building.
Absolutely. We also represent Boys and Girls Clubs, and we mentioned to them about the possibility of working with the, with the group over there to see if there was an interest in, in having a Boys and Girls Club. But their program is more academic than it is recreational, which seems to be the theme that's there now. And not only that, they were putting a Boys and Girls Club, which just opened up in Indian Head. And they're trying to get at least one Boys and Girls Club in each of the counties. So. But there's some other opportunities that we've talked, some possibilities that can look at the management of it.
So, thank you for that effort as well. Uh, so is there any danger of them losing state funds because they haven't used them?
Uh, no, I think they're, I think they're pretty secure, and we've had this discussion. We have to show some activity there of what's going to be done, and that's why it's, but you know, in order for this project to be successful, you got to have the ownership of the, of the, of the community itself. So that whole entire process is, is, it's got to be the first step.
So not to put anybody on the spot, I, I, I'm just perplexed. What is the, why has this taken so long, I guess, to get an operational plan on my?
We were looking at some, some opportunities, mentioned the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
And then it's just, uh, just trying to get a meeting to go in. And things that the county aren't, what they ought to be too. Some of the possibilities could be out there, and we've had this discussion. The taxpayers of La Plata pay the, their taxes for all the community services that's out there. And if you look around the county, there are community services, operations everywhere. And it's not unreasonable to think that, you know, part of their plan has got to be the town of La Plata, that possibly the county could work with the, with the folks over there and develop, you know, not develop, but operate the center, incorporating one of, some of the things that they'd like to see there. So. So it's just trying to get that conversation going.
Again, it's a partnership.
Yep. So, and, uh, the last project that I have on my list that we're working on is the Coca-Cola plant. The town has an interest in, uh, right now, given the new development and the amount of industrial land there. There were conversations years ago, and I was part of those conversations about La Plata. I mean, Coca-Cola moving out to one of the industrial parks. And I guess it wasn't feasible at the time, but right now it is. Since there's going to be an industrial park, it gets some down out of La Plata, the land is very, very expensive. So our lead on that is Ellen Valentino. We represent Coca-Cola and the Beverage Association. So as soon as we finish up session, we're going to have that discussion ready for a meeting between the folks from Coca-Cola and the town.
Wonderful. That would be a, a great, um, that is part of the 2000 Vision Plan. So that is something that they have been working on for decades as well. Not that we want Coca-Cola to leave La Plata at all, um, and because we do want them to continue to call us home, but.
Plant's not what it used to be either.
No.
That used to be the center.
We have a story or two about, uh, doing, uh, dances there and the.
Remember those days? Dances at the Coca-Cola?
Oh, man, alone. I remember winning a few dance contests there, Jim.
I won a Twister contest one time.
Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember you're the guy that had Lucanella at VAD.
That is great. Well, thank you very much. Any, uh, further questions?
One comment I want to make, you know, as far as the sidewalks on Washington Avenue and Coca-Cola plant. I've had comments made to you. It's not going to happen your lifetime. I hope they're wrong.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, there was a while I was doubting it, but Sarah, I'm hopeful. I got my fingers crossed that there'll be some movement real soon.
Wow. Thank you so much for coming in.
Just, just real quick, I'll circle back to the Route Six Streetscape, because that's important. Again, because of a walkable La Plata, and I forgot to mention that in today's world, economic development is not necessarily about attracting businesses. It is, but the more important piece of it is, is, is making a place, making it a unique place. That means you attract small businesses by creating sidewalks and cafes and that kind of, uh, for better word, ambiance. So by having a Route Six Main Street that functions that way, and sidewalks on Washington Avenue, you have all that synergy going on now. And so, and, and then the new library, and then the Dorchester Center, because you have.
Hospital.
And the hospital. So you have all that synergy. And so we, again, we just need to capitalize on that. And I know there's some other federal funds that are out there now, grants and things. So I'm going to try to find them. If you don't mind, I'll send that to Brent, to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we send, uh, I think you get it weekly, the, um, at the federal level, there are a lot of federal grants. And, uh, we get the ops report every week that we afford to. You are getting those, aren't you?
I am. Thank you very much. All right.
So, you know, thank you again. I, I had some discussions with most of you. Jim, I wasn't able to talk to you because I heard you were on vacation.
We got home last night.
You looked very relaxed.
Well, I, I slept doing my last chemo treatment today. And unfortunately, the last day of the tour, we were left the ship doing a tour. Rose stepped into a hole and hurt her wrist, and we were in a hospital last night until 1:30 this morning. And she has a broken wrist, some bones in the wrist is broken. Had to get the CT scan, said she's over 60, not how much, but she's over 60. And so we had to get that done last night as well. And so, uh, I was tired.
Never a dull moment.
Never. But Antarctica, how many people has, can say they've been to Antarctica?
Oh.
See, we had 100 whales surrounding our ship at one time, and the ship crew said they've never seen that. We loved them. And the penguins, they're cute, but they smell.
I'm going to smell.
You've got a thousand penguins. Do a lot of things.
Oh, cool. I have never been there. That will be on my bucket list now. Well, thank you very much for the update, thorough update. Really appreciate that and for all the, uh, hard work you're doing on behalf of town.
If you, if you have an interest in any particular thing that we're working on, just give us a call.
Wonderful.
We try to meet, uh, weekly with the town during the session, and I think it's bi-weekly during the non-session. So.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
It's a pleasure working for you.
Thank you. I'll get back.
Thank you.
All right, we will go on to the next one. It's the body worn camera purchase. Chief, uh, we, we see it, we see you there. Hey, Chief, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. Just been a busy week, uh, for my family. So, uh, moving on to the body cameras. Uh, during the development of the Town's American Rescue Plan budget priorities, the agency asked for $50,000 to be set aside for ShotSpotters. ShotSpotters are cutting edge law enforcement technology that quickly distinguishes between a gunshot, uh, fireworks, electrical transformer explosions, et cetera, and would have notified our officers, uh, about it within a minute and within about 20 feet of the location of where the shot was fired. Uh, we did this research, uh, to address, uh, some incidents that were going on at the time, a homicide in Phoenix Run, uh, shootings, uh, on Petuxon Court, and several drive-by shootings that, uh, occurred over in the Phoenix Run area, where fortunately nobody was struck. The initial cost of the ShotSpotter technology was $50,000 a year, which included, uh, a year's worth of monitoring. As we went to do a little follow-up, as we moved further into the discussions with ShotSpotters, we found out that the technology would now cost $55,000 to install, and it would be a reoccurring, uh, charge of $55,000 a year, uh, to maintain the system. As within the organization's priorities change and needs change, and there was an incident that, uh, really kind of in an instant changed our, uh, priorities. As the council's aware, on November 8th, 2022, we had a quadruple homicide-suicide, uh, in town. It occurred during shift change, would allow us to have a lot of extra officers there. But one of the things that we knew was, uh, only half our folks had body cameras on at the time. And that reason was because the outgoing shift had come in, they had put them in their docking stations, and were about to go home when the call went out. Um, the on-duty shift had come in, they had picked their cameras up. But, uh, on scene, only half of our folks had the body cameras. Command staff had had discussions before, because we had a couple minor incidents with officers either coming into work and not having a body camera, or were on their way home and jumped into a, uh, you know, a call to help somebody out, and they didn't have a body camera. And then when, uh, the, the, uh, State's Attorney's Office asked for it, we did not have the, uh, footage to give to them. So, uh, we had discussed as a command staff to, uh, possibly approach the council and buy a second camera for each person. And during that time, we started, you know, as you know, we had the, uh, we were the first in the county to have a body camera system. Uh, some of our cameras started to show some wear, and, and they're ruggedized Panasonic cameras. They, they've been very good to us, but you know, time and, uh, uh, just continued usage, uh, affected some of the durability. So as we started sending cameras off to get repaired, it was costing us about $600 a unit to ship it, ship it back and get the camera repaired. New cameras were $911. So we, uh, we continued as a command staff to have discussions on what we should do. We had the problem that only half our folks, uh, had body cameras on a critical incident. We were starting to see, uh, some wear and the cost associated with the wear. So we, uh, we determined that we would, uh, ask the council, and, uh, we did it through, uh, Brent and, uh, Mr. Himmler, to reprogram that $50,000, uh, for, that we had set aside for the ShotSpotters, which is technology we would love to have. But it's, it take a, it took a backseat to the body camera, uh, upgrade. So in discussions with our vendor, looking at the generation, new generation of Panasonic cameras, uh, they've made it now to where there's a battery and memory card, uh, that attached to the camera. So instead of having to buy two body cameras, you just have to buy an extra battery, which we should have anyway, and the memory system. So they, an officer would come in, uh, at the end of their shift, they would take the battery and the memory card, put it into the docking station and pick up a new one. So there's no reason for them not to have a body camera at any time. And we knew at some point, because our system's about five years old, that we were going to have to approach the, uh, the council about, uh, buying new body cameras or, or, um, just redoing the system. Uh, so after some discussions internally, um, and some discussions with our, uh, vendor, Frontline Mobile Tech, we came to the conclusion that we should really reprogram that money, uh, get the new generation of body cameras, which will be, uh, much more useful for our organization. We, uh, found the Sourcewell contract that, uh, would allow us. Um, we uh found the Sourcewell contract that would allow us to to do a total rebuild and upgrade of our system for $36,618. I know on the paperwork that you have, it shows that the uh the estimate uh expired, uh, that's, we we re-upped our estimate, it expires on March 30th, 2023. So the number that we uh we provided to you is very accurate. So it's our recommendation to uh reprogram $50,000 of that ShotSpotter money and to move forward with upgrading uh our body camera wear uh for each officer in the department. Um, any questions that I can answer?
Captain Jenkins, work for, thank you, chief, for bringing this forward. I'm assuming that there's a warranty with the phones?
Uh, warranty with the cameras?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, the cameras, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, there, I think there's a a two-year warranty and then we usually buy the extended warranty. Uh, it's not really a lot of cost, uh, but you can't buy that until the the initial warranty expires.
Sure, okay. And then and then, so typically, what would be the life of these new phones, I mean, these new cameras?
Well, we're hoping that we, uh, just like the Gen Two cameras, we're we're hoping to get five or six years out of them and then start a replacement program. Uh, and the the cameras are getting better, they're getting smaller. I'm sure in five years, it it's going to be a little clip that goes on your glasses or uh attaches to your pen. But uh, yeah, we we we're confident we'll get at least five years out of this this camera system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Senator Matt Challenger, Ward Two. Um, how old are the current cameras that we're going to be replacing?
I think they're about five years old.
Okay, and then just so I understand it, there's no new fund request. We're just replacing the ShotSpotters with the cost for the body cameras.
That that's correct, sir.
And it looks like it it would, it's actually coming in a little bit less than um what the ShotSpotter cost would be.
Then, yeah, it's about 13,390 some or 80 some dollars, 82, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so um, Brent, are we looking, uh, do we need to get a consensus to move this forward?
Yes, it'd be a consensus, uh, just a matter of procedure. The next item on your agenda will be discussing the American Rescues Plan Act, which would amend that budget the to move those monies from ShotSpotter to the uh body worn camera, which Karina will be presenting. Uh, since the amendment to the spending plan is an ordinance, it requires two readings. We didn't, could not qualify it as an emergency. Therefore, it would be, if it's the will of council, it will go for a first reading tonight uh and a second reading next meeting where council can take a uh a vote to approve or disapprove. Uh, at that time, if the amendment were to pass, then this request for the shot or ShotSpotter, excuse me, for the body worn cameras would come before you as a resolution. It would just be stacked after the budget amendment, the ordinance in the agenda for next week.
All right, so do I have a consensus, first of all, that we are all okay with? If you are okay with the body worn cameras being purchased instead of the ShotSpotters?
I do, yes.
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 And so am I. All right, so that's step one. So next we're going to have um uh our treasurer up here to talk about the ARPA budget amendment that is specific to this.
Yes, so to meet um Chief Shinner's request, we're going to have to move or reallocate $50,000 from the ShotSpotters um to four other programs that's currently under public safety. $40,000 would go to the body cameras and the remaining 10,000 would be decided, divided between the other three programs, the Trunark testing, the drones and the um Prolaris ATV.
And I have a question for you. Um, the reason for the distribution of the the other 10,000, is there a need to increase the funding for those four, those three other requests?
That was the request from the PD. This is all within the um public safeties that was originally allocated to public safety. So we're keeping it within the same department.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, any questions uh for our treasurer? Oh, wow, you got off easy. I'm thinking that was was like a 30-minute discussion on here. All right, wonderful. Um, are we um okay to bring this to, uh, do we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, and I as well. All right, that brings us to legislation, ordinance 23 dash zero nine for introduction only.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, as you stated, ordinance 23 zero nine uh for introduction and ordinance concerning amendment to the town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2023 Financial Plan Budget for the purpose of amending the town of La Plata Fiscal Year 2023 Financial Plan Budget in all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. I hope that we see this next week as well. All right, that brings us to our commission reports. Our world traveler, do you have anything?
I was out of the area when they met and it was unexpected. Initially it was canceled, then all the last minute they brought it back on. So I really don't have any report, sorry.
No, no worries.
Not this week.
Okay, and Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, Councilman Jenkins, Ward Four, the the Park and Recreation Commission met uh at O'Dark Thirty, I mean, 7:30 on March the uh March the eighth. Uh, we had a request from an organization to adopt a town park as part of their, part of our keep La Plata beautiful adopt a spot program. There was a discussion and it was felt uh consensus that we would reject that request because there were concerns about the organization. Number one, it was from St. Mary's County, uh, and then there was some other issues with respect to uh how they would use the parking lot. So that was denied and, but we are going to go back and look at the program as well. Um, what else? Um, Director Stahl gave us, gave the commission an update or a status report uh about the spillway at Lake Tillman. As you know, that's through MDE, they they've had to go back and essentially, guess for a better word, fix fix the the spillway and the dam. So there was some concern from the commission members about that project. So Director Stahl just gave us an overview of where they are with respect to uh the funding and we have a, it's been designed and now it's going to be at the point where that will be submitted to MDD for review of that design and hopefully permit, and then he talked eventually about the construction process. And would it be any serious disruption of of activity at the park? Probably won't be, so we appreciated that update from Director Stahl and our next meeting will be sometime early in April. Thank you. Set up the questions, that's my report.
Any questions? Great, and um immediately there is an upcoming event this Sunday that I know that the um the police will be involved with as well. It's the Shamrock Run through town, so that is in support of um, Councilman Challenger, what it, what is their? I'm going to put, you're a sponsor, what is their um, their group that they are sponsoring? It was caring or care? It's always a great organization that they support with the funds that they raise for this um 5K and people dress up as wild as can be on St. Patrick's for St. Patrick's Day. And yes, it is, um, I had to go digging on that one too, when you find that, just let me know.
And so I I usually do run. It's not very fast, but I usually run. We, the Shamrock Run almost always has a great charity that's local. Um, in the past, they've done a lot of great work here. Let me just pull it up just a moment.
Sorry to put you on the spot with that. So that, and um for those that uh do not know, we did have um the opening today for the Charles for lunch. So that is now fully operational, um, except they don't have, they will put the brunch in uh in the next couple of weeks, so they're open for dinner and they're open for lunch right now, Monday through Friday. The weekend brunch is coming, um, and the market was uh has been open for several weeks now. So if you haven't checked it out, make sure you do. And.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for bringing up Shamrock Run. I am glad to tell everyone that this year, um, they're raising money for an awareness for the Rhabdomyosarcoma Research Foundation. Um, Rhabdomyosarcoma is an extremely rare cancerous tumor that arises in soft tissue and it's often uh found in muscles of children. So it's a great cause and they always find causes that are maybe a little bit lesser known uh to bring awareness. So I know there are going to be a lot of people running, so be careful when you're driving around on Sunday. Um, and hopefully people can join us.
Wonderful. Thank you for that update. And if you haven't checked out the newest production at our Port Tobacco Players, there are still tickets available for Once Upon a Matches. I saw it last weekend and it was fabulous. The talent is incredible, so it is something that you do not want to miss. With that, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much for coming and appreciate your attendance.
Thank you for joining us this evening. This concludes tonight's meeting.